Okay, good evening, everybody. It's 6 o'clock. It's Tuesday, the 15th of October. Welcome to our regular town board meeting. Everybody stand.
I'm Joe Jones, City Mayor, and I'm the state's America. We do the father for which we stand. One nation, united in the whole. Very interesting.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to adopt, approve the prior minutes of our town board meeting from September 19th, September 23rd, September 24th, and October 4th.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Alan. I think we have one amendment, Joan, to the October 4th meeting that the executive session was moved by me and seconded by Chauncey.
Correct.
Any comments or questions?
No.
In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Joan. The skate park is almost complete. We've had to chase skaters off it because the cement is not cured. And if you skate on it when the cement is not yet cured, it will get ruined. And if it gets ruined, we don't feel able to fix it. So please stay off until the cement is cured and the fences are down. The Children's Fall Festival event at the recreation park is on October 19th from 9:00 until 3:00. And all dogs living in Rhinebeck must have registration, and they have to be on a leash. And I've got to tell you, to all your people letting your dogs off-leash in the park, it's getting bad again. So that is something we will have to address with fines and maybe even police patrol. It's not allowed. It's not allowed by the easement on our park. It's not allowed by the state of New York, and our insurance company doesn't want it to happen. So please keep your dogs on leash. We have two public hearings tonight that I'd like to have a motion to open the public hearing for the contract for the Rhinebeck Fire District and the Hillside Fire Protection District contracts.
Motion.
Thanks, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. What is your name, Chad?
So is the new guy.
It's always the new guy.
Joan, did you put the amendment ones I sent you?
Everybody asked them. No, they're not in the book.
Oh, they're here? They're not in the book?
No. Books are gone inside. I have one. I'm sorry. Just bear with me. We are setting these public hearings. Wait, they're tonight, but where are the contracts, Joanie?
The contracts are behind the resolution, and the public hearing are scheduled for two weeks.
For?
Both, the fire districts.
For tonight?
Correct.
Yes. Does anybody here want to comment on the contracts for the fire companies? Any comments or questions? We're grateful to both Hillside and Rhinebeck. We are fortunate in that we have volunteer fire coverage, which is something rarer and rarer. You know, it's something that most communities are aging out of, and a lot of communities in Dutchess are looking at big increases with professionalizing their fire, and the county is talking about taking over. So we're very grateful that we have such robust volunteer fire departments here. So I'm going to go to, I'd like a motion, this is tab 7, for 2024-345. I should close the public hearing. Let me just get this on. All right, no one wants to be heard. May I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Public hearing is unanimously closed. They have a motion for the Rhinebeck Fire District 2025-2026 contract. That's tab 7. It's 2024-345.
Motion.
Sure. Thank you. I have one amendment here on the resolution of the, it is not 282,473 for 2026. The village board wanted a 3% raise, which I still think is a bargain. So that number needs to be changed to $286,302. Is everybody okay with that amendment? All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And then tab 8, 2024-346, may I have a motion for the Hillside Fire Protection District 2025-2028 contract?
Motion.
Any comments or questions? This contract, we're entering into a three-year contract, although after this year, any party has the right to cancel within 30 days from the first of the year. But we're set through 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. I guess we're going to go back to the top now, and we need a motion for Resolution 2024-340, our workforce housing secret negative declaration for Locust Hill project. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Warren, you want to tell the public what we're doing here?
Yeah, you have, at the last town board meeting, we filed part 2 of the environmental, full environmental assessment form for the project, and determined that there were no significant or large impacts which would result from this project. And for that reason, the town board voted to issue a negative declaration, subject to my drafting the negative declaration and having you vote on it tonight. So you have before it, before you, a secret negative declaration dated October 15, 2024, the date that we went through that. There were just a couple of changes to the copy that I sent you earlier last week, and there were just minor changes, typos and things of that sort. So you should have the revised negative declaration redlined and in clean form. So you should all have that. So that's what we're going to be, we should have a motion to amend your agenda to include the revised, substitute the revised negative declaration for the one that you have in the book.
Want a motion?
Yes, please.
Motion.
Thank you. Thanks, Chauncey. Thanks, Alan.
Okay.
Okay. Alan, Warren, is there in here a tree donation?
That's in the negative declaration. The author has confirmed that there'll be a $20,000 donation to the town.
Very generous.
As a mitigation.
By never easily used it.
He thought it was 50, but...
Was it 25 or 20? Do I hear better?
Thank you. Ken Carney Construction.
I believe it's 25 more.
It was 25, I'm sorry.
And it's in this narrative.
And that's in the negative declaration, and that will be used, I believe, for plantings in the town park.
Yeah, we have a, it was very gracious, Carney Construction, to help us with our greening project in our park, and because trees are coming down, he's donating $25,000 to help us realize a future shade tree planting area that we did with the Conway School. So we'll be planting trees in our park. Thank you.
Just for the record, that's a voluntary contribution.
Absolutely.
And so the negative declaration is 19 pages long. I'm not going to read it tonight.
Oh, come on.
Unless you want me to.
No, no, it's okay.
And basically, it's very, very similar to what we went over at the last meeting.
You did a lot of reading at the last meeting.
So I did my reading at the last, at the last meeting. And so we have that before you. We also have a resolution adopting the secret negative declaration. Again, that's been amended slightly. I think I just amended the caption. So we should substitute the amended resolution adopting the secret negative declaration for the one that you have in your book.
We need a resolution for adoption. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
So just for, so you know what the process is, once we adopt the secret negative declaration, we will then be voting aye in resolution to approve the concept plan pursuant to our affordable housing.
You mean right after this vote tonight?
Pardon?
You mean right after this vote tonight?
After this, tonight. We're doing that tonight. And that will approve the concept plan that we have been reviewing for many, many months. And in addition, it will be forwarded on to the planning board immediately, rather than waiting for the adoption of a local law changing the zoning to accommodate this project, with the understanding, and it's a resolution, that the planning board can start the site plan approval process and go through it, but cannot vote on the site plan until we finish the local law adoption process. And we are, I am working on the resolution for the local law, and the local law, we should have that ready in a week or two, week or two shorter. And that will be the last step for the town board, once the town board adopts the local law after another public hearing.
You mean he lay down the overlay?
Yes. In the next, in the next meeting, we will start that process, have another public hearing. We don't have to do another secret review because we've already done the secret review. And hopefully, we can vote on that, have that done fairly expeditiously. And then it will be in the hands of the, of the planning board.
We lead you to the planning board after this.
Thank you.
So the first thing we need to do is vote on the resolution adopting the negative seeker, the secret negative declaration for the Locust Hill workforce housing.
Okay, so I think we have that open on the floor, and thanks for explaining it, Warren. By roll call, Alan?
Aye.
Chauncey?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
And I vote yes as well. Passes unanimously.
And there was an appendage A that's going to be attached to the negative declaration, which is the full environmental assessment form, the part 2 and the part 3. So Joan, we'll have to put those together, and that will be the negative declaration. And in the resolution, there are directions as to what has to be done and to who it's sent. It's going to be sent to all the involved agencies, or we're going to send a copy to the interested agencies, and of course, the planning board. And it has to be filed with the environmental notice bulletin for DEC. The second resolution is the resolution approving a concept plan.
We'll get that on the floor. Can we get, we haven't gotten that to the floor yet.
Motion.
I'd like a motion.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay for tab 3, Resolution 2024-341.
Motion.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Now it's on the floor, Warren.
Sorry.
That's okay.
And that's the resolution approving the concept plan for the Locust Hill workforce housing development, and forwarding the application to the county of Rhinebeck Planning Board for commencement of site plan review. Again, there were some minor changes that I made to that, and so that's not reflected in what you have in the book. So I ask you to substitute the revised resolution for the one in the book by motion.
Motion to substitute non-substantive revised resolution for the one in the book.
Second.
I make, I make your first. Can I have a second to that?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor of substituting the non-substantively changed resolution? Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thanks.
And this is how it basically does what I just explained. It does approve the concept plan, which we're required to do. It's not an approval of the project, it's just a concept plan. It's not approved till it gets site plan approval by the planning board. And again, we're asking the planning board to cooperate with the town board on this to start the review, even though we haven't passed a local law. So we need you to vote on that resolution as amended.
By, by voice, Alan?
Aye.
Chauncey?
Aye.
Chad? And I vote yes as well. Passes unanimously.
I say for me.
Warren, should we plan on attending the planning board meetings to, I mean, it's our project, is it our project or is it Ken's project?
It's Ken, it's their project.
Do we go in support of it?
The only thing that we're doing is what we, we're doing the environmental review and approving the concept plan and the local law adoption.
Is it something, is it out of the ordinary for us to be there to urge them?
Not, not at all. I don't know, I leave it up to the applicant to coordinate with the planning board moving forward with the project.
We'd be happy to do that. We appreciate your support. This is a collaborative process, as you've made it, a collaborative process in legislation. So that would be something we'd be very grateful for.
Okay.
For the record, Tony Morabato.
You just changed my name?
Charlie.
Oh, yes, the new guy again.
The new guy.
Charlie Montamano, attorney for attorney.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I had an eye exam, so I'm still dilated.
Oh.
Am I thinking correctly? So I assume that you will participate in that process.
I'd like to participate, and I'd like just to draft a statement as to why we feel this is so important and why we've undertaken this.
Well, I think that's, we have that in the record.
I think it is.
Let us know.
So far, but I'm sure they're going to want to hear from us.
We'd like to coordinate that process.
Yeah, exactly.
Keep you updated as soon as we can get in front of the board, which we're looking to do, as you pointed out earlier, immediately. That's what we're looking to do.
Good luck.
And we're hoping, this is a new process for the town board and the planning board, and just reviewing the town code, you know, the initial plan was in front of the planning board a couple of years ago. Now it goes back to them. So we're hoping that because it was in front of them, we're eligible for, what, next meeting? We're hoping.
We hope.
We're going to try tomorrow. We'll reach out, see if we can get on.
Correction.
The agenda as soon as possible.
Okay.
We've had some dialogue with the planning board, so they're not going to be surprised that this is happening.
They know this is coming.
Oh, for sure. I'm the liaison to the planning board, so if you need anything.
I do, yes.
Not that kind of thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your donation.
I'm sorry everyone's pronouncing me.
Charlie.
That's all I'm sorry. We weren't great.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
We weren't for anything else, do we? Park benches, I don't know.
We've got to get out of here now.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work. We appreciate it.
You're welcome, Charlie. You mind if I stay for?
No, we're good.
I think so, yeah.
No, we're good. We can handle it.
I think so. I can leave you to your own devices. Don't get me in trouble.
Well, this time we have you. Tab 4, you need a motion for Resolution 2024-342 for the highway department to advertise the 2025 material bids. I thought we did this already. Okay.
We're in tab 5.
May I have a second? Or a tab 4?
4.
Thank you, Chauncey. Does anybody have any questions or comments about this? This is just, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion for Resolution 2024-347 for the purchase of skate park benches, Chad.
Motion.
May I have a second?
I need to...
I need a second motion.
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey.
Well, I, as well, I need to bring you to the floor and amend.
Yep, that's fine. I just needed it on the floor. So what kind of amendment?
The amendment to this is that the bidding process was not in the normal structure due to the specific type of benches needed at the skate park. Only one quote was available to be procured for the availability within our region of New York State. And that's basically, we wanted to get the right kind of park bench for that particular area.
So that people couldn't use it for skating on.
It's a bit more durable, and it's made to be durable. And that's, that's why we did that. That's why we chose this particular vendor. We had a lot of collaboration between the designer of the park, I'm sorry, the construction of the park, our architect, and myself, and others to select it. And the, and that's, and that's it.
Is there any other amendment?
No. No, the prices, the amount is, is correct.
Not to exceed 3,200 things?
It's a bid process.
Thanks for all of your work on it. Joanie, you got that revised?
I got that.
Thank you, Joanie.
All in favor, oh, oh, sorry?
Sorry, go ahead.
All in favor of the revised language, Worthy?
Aye.
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 Joan?
343, please. Resolution 343, tab 5.
Five and six. You jumped down to seven.
I'll go, I'll go back.
Or whatever it was.
I thought we were talking about this. I, I see my cross-out marks.
All in favor?
I just, I missed one. What can I say?
You do great.
Thanks, thank you.
Missed two. Five, tab 5 and 6.
Okay. Let's, talking about skate park benches, let's vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Chad, thanks for all of your work on this and getting them done and ordered in time to go into the new cement. Well done. For anyone who hasn't seen the skate park, it's looking awesome.
It's not open yet.
No, it's not. And if it gets broken, we can't fix it. Okay, so I'm going to go back, because apparently I skipped ahead, somebody mentioned. I'm going to go back to tab 5. May I have a resolution, a motion for Resolution 2024-343 to purchase updated automated external defibrillators, the AEDs for town locations?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. We started this about 15, 16 years ago, and our AEDs are now outdated. We're going to have one in town hall, one in the garage, and two at the park. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for tab 6, Resolution 2024-344. I'll make the motion. I need a second to schedule our 2025 budget public hearing for November 7th at 5:00 PM. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. The reason why it's at 5 is because we have court at 6. So I guess if we, that's fine. We have budget public hearings between now and then. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to skip ahead because I already did some, so I'd like a motion for tab 10, Resolution 2024-348, installation of archtop fiber at recreation office and pool. Alan?
Motion.
Thank you. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks for getting it done, Alan.
You're welcome, Alan.
I need a motion for tab 11, 2024-349, to dispose of a stand-up desk from Central Supply.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alan?
Aye.
It's okay. Any opposed? We will, passes unanimously. We'll put it on Facebook Marketplace and see what kind of money we can get for it. I need a motion for 2024-350, medical insurance renewal.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. May I have a motion for 2024-351, additional workdays for cemetery maintenance, maintenance season employee?
Motion. Second.
This is because we're doing the roads down there with the help of the highway department. So the gravel, we just need some more labor.
And what for?
The cemetery.
How?
Yeah. Do we vote, all, do we vote on this?
No.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
You skipped tab 11, I think.
No, I didn't.
No, we just did that.
No, I didn't. I did that before medical insurance renewal. Good try. Good try.
It was a test.
Yeah. Tab 14, Resolution 2024-352, I will make a motion for preliminary accounts payable extract. May I have a second?
Second.
No, thanks, Chad. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Is there any new business before the town board? Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Bob, how was the marathon?
It looks good. Not a, not a lot of runners, like previous year.
900.
Wow, we didn't see them, but, I mean, we were cheering them on. The only thing is, is that there really weren't many road markings at all down by the bridge. We're talking about that S curve there. Most of the people didn't know it was going to happen. Matter of fact, we thought it was canceled because there was no markings on the road, no signs, or nothing.
I'll forward your group a letter I got from the organizer.
It's just that with Mill Road being used more and more with the closure of South Mill Road, we have more cars on the road, more idiots. And I'm afraid someone's, you know, someone could be injured or a car will appear off the road. And it doesn't seem that the organizers care, care, because I spoke with one of the organizers, and I said, "We brought this issue up last March." And he goes, "I didn't hear anything about it." I go, "Well..."
That's not true. It came twice.
I know.
Is this something that people on the road want us not to allow in the future?
No.
Because, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but we can't micromanage.
Yeah.
You know, like, we either have to accept it with its faults or say it's just not working for us.
No, most of the people are in favor of it, really. You're going to get one or two people who are going to say, "I don't want it." It's okay. It's just that I feel there should be more, like, cones or something down by the bridge.
It's not within our, like, we don't supervise that.
I know the Dutchess County Sheriff was out on Route nine and out by Wharton Road and Mill Road, but nowhere in between there.
All right. I'll, I'll send this around to your group. I think there are about five neighbors on this email. And any feedback you want to give back to the organizer, do it on the record and the town board will be copied.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, if it's an enhancement of more side edge, if there's, if you just want an enhancement of more side edge along the route, that could be something.
The water drivers and the runners.
Sorry, 670 finishers, 500 and a half marathon. Some of them do the half. So we capped it at 800. We placed less cones on the roads this year and it seemed to work out fine. No one got lost on the course and it seemed to be safe. Traffic, especially on Mill Road, was exceptionally light. As usual, the police from three branches, Rhinebeck PD, Dutchess County Sheriffs and the New York State Troopers were exemplary. Roads were kept open throughout the race and cars were able to pass through. No injuries were reported by our AMTs at the finish. No complaints had been reported to the Rhinebeck PD per peep by noon on Sunday. Many residents in both the village and town along the route were out supporting runners. All runners were off the course and all was cleaned up by 12:30 PM. Porta potties were picked up shortly thereafter. Dutchess County Fair, et cetera, et cetera. Donating to volunteers from New Vans and German Town High School Honor Society. Eighty-five percent of the runners were from the state of New York, 57 from Rhinebeck, 28 from Red Hook, 26 from Kingston and 120 from New York City area. Matchbox Cafe reported a big volume of business uptick post-race. Making donations to Northern Dutchess Foundation and the Michael J. Fox Foundation for Parkinson's. Only negative of the whole day was myself being stopped on the course at 12:30 and by a resident who was clearly checking on us even though all was fine, et cetera, et cetera. I'll circulate this to the group.
Yeah.
And...
What, no phone calls, seven o'clock in the morning by the porta potty?
You mean me? I think I kept my ringer off this, this year. Yeah, I did get that call last year. Okay, well, I'm glad it went on pretty well. Did you sort of do something to say?
Comment? My name is Frank Stoppinback, actually from Redwood. And this is about a little adventure I had at the Rhinebeck Farmers Market. We're nearby. In 2014, then Vice President Biden was the point man on Project Ukraine with helpers Anthony Lincoln and Victoria Lewin and a host of other agencies. The idea was to create news tensions between Ukraine and Russia to...
Sir, we only take comments on things within the town of Rhinebeck.
Oh, okay. You don't, you don't, well, what was interesting was...
Is this about a national level event or...
Okay. If you want to do it. What was interesting was that I was holding Manny a table near the Rhinebeck Farmers Market.
Which is the village, not the town.
I'm sorry, what?
That's not our purview either. That's the village.
That's okay.
Thank you for coming. Our reason being, we, we had people wanting to talk about China and trade deficits and that's not what we do here. We concentrate on the town of Rhinebeck.
The only reason I do this stuff is because it isn't covered in the media.
So you're welcome to have your own forum anywhere you want, but not at a town board. I mean, respectfully, you know, we... Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, any other comments on any other non-agenda items within the purview of the town of Rhinebeck's local law? I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the matters pertaining to a particular employee or consultant or individual.
Which is it? Is it an employee?
It's a consultant.
Okay. And credit history, medical history, employment history, appointment of one?
Appointment of one and, and, or history. Thanks. Keep a note, straight on the 105, section 105.
China deficit, I would cover it.
Well, you can turn around and interview Mr. Stoppinback.
I've talked, he's a nice guy.
Okay, we're, thank you. And thank you for being so kind about me not, us not taking comments on our town issues. We'd be here forever if we did. I'll send out the email, Bob. I just think this will take us five minutes. I don't think we're going to take any action, but we will be back to adjourn. Thank you. More executive session. We have a budget meeting at 12 o'clock on Thursday. Does that still work for everybody?
12:30. Can we please move it up to 12:30?
I'm fine with that. Joan, I mean, we're scheduled to start at 12, so we'll be here, you know. Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
I hope, I think we can get all changes made in one or two, depending on where we are. We'd like to bring general fund down a little bit. We'll look at cuts to the park, slow down our spending and growth there, which I think will be good for us too. You know, to sort of, just look at the projects we have to do and, and get that done.
So it's going to be 12:30?
12:30.
Thank you for that.
Sure. We are having tomorrow at the waterfront park, a inspection by the state just to make sure that it's up to, that's at, I think, 9:30 or 10:30. And I think Bob Fitzpatrick and Bob Boyer are telling. Anything else? Any other questions or comments from any of you on that? Okay, hearing nothing, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. We'll see you soon.